I have six o'clock. I would like to welcome everybody to the July 23 meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we all take a moment for prayer, please? Heavenly Father, I come before you tonight thanking you. Thank you for giving this board the opportunity and the great privilege of serving the citizens of this city. Lord, and I ask of you tonight to touch each one of us, touch our hearts and our minds, so when we conduct the business of this city, the decisions that we make will affect the citizens of our city in a mighty way. So let us govern ourselves accordingly and do the work of, do your work for your people. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, call the roll.
Alderman Dingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Oden.
Here.
Okay, is everybody good with the agenda? At this time, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, the motion carries. Let's go to item number seven. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board. Item number seven is consideration of board to adopt a resolution to amend the classification pay plan for fiscal year 1920. As you're aware, we approve each year within the budget ordinance, a classification pay plan for all positions within the city. After reviewing some efficiencies and operational needs, the police department, over the last several weeks, it's been identified that the classification pay plan be amended to add a position of deputy chief of police. The paid scheduled grade will be 27. That has a minimum salary of 69,726, a midpoint salary of 91,603, and a maximum salary of 113,480. I'm happy to entertain any kind of questions the board may have.
Does the board have questions?
Yes, I do. I just want to know, why are we seeking a deputy chief of police?
The, within the organization, we've identified some concerns with succession planning, I guess. We had two positions, two captains that were planning to leave. And one of the things that we wanted to do was ensure that we had some appropriate succession planning within the organization. What we're trying to do is identify a need of a deputy chief. We're talking about an organization that has over 120 employees chief. Is it, what is it?
116.
116. So it's a fairly large organization, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. And some of the things that we also saw were some span of control issues with overseeing of the duties of those positions. With those vacancies of the captain's positions, you also are looking at, you know, one of the captains that's still there is looking at about a year and a half of within that position. And obviously, the other two positions, if they're vacated, those would be very short tenure folks as well. So we're looking to create this position, to create an opportunity for succession planning for the chief of police position.
Okay, so I'm quite sure we're gonna look in-house first before we fill this position?
That's always the intent. If we have people who are qualified in-house, we obviously look in-house.
Okay. If the board allows, I don't see why not. I'd like to bring the chief up for a moment and ask him questions if he doesn't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to ask you, is this something that you feel good about, that you need, that is mostly within your department?
I think it's very important, as the city manager says, as far as succession planning. If you were to look at my command staff or my supervisory staff, after we have a sergeant that's retiring in September and a lieutenant who's retiring in February, at that point, every single supervisor will have less than three years of experience in their grade. So we need to do something to shore that up if we can.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. City Manager, could you just clarify? This is not an addition of a head count. This is head count neutral. This is just adding a classification paid schedule, and then there'll be some movement within the organization, correct? Is that what I understand?
That is the intent. What you're adopting tonight is merely just an amendment to add the position. Whenever you, essentially, we cannot as staff, or ours cannot as the city manager, add a position or a new title without the board approval. This position was not in the adopted paid classification plan when it was adopted through the budget process. So in order for me to have or advertise a deputy chief of police position, then it has to be changed in this schedule. But ultimately, it is the intent of us, as myself, the city manager, and the chief of police, that this will be a net zero for the department on as far as the number of positions within the department.
Because if it was an addition, it would require a budget amendment, correct?
Typically, yes, unless we can find it within the organization as far as a savings throughout the year. But ultimately, that comes to head at the beginning of next year where you have an additional position. You've got to be able to find the money to be able to do that. So that's definitely something that would have to be accounted for at that point. But since it's a net zero, you're probably talking about a minimal increase over the next however many years as long as it continues to go on.
Okay, thank you.
You said savings, so how much money are we looking at in savings? I mentioned savings.
I didn't say savings. I said increase.
Increase.
But it's a very minimal one. We're talking probably maybe $10,000 a year, maybe $8,000 to $10,000 a year is what I'm looking at. That's through various, you know, attrition moves and obviously promotions that come behind those. Typically, when you have some longer tenured employees who are higher up in the pay grades or pay scale that retire, they're backfilled with positions of, you know, folks who are still lower in their careers, so they're working their way back up again. So typically, you'll see some savings, if you want to call it that. It's technically not a savings. It's just a reduction in what your expenditure is.
Thank you.
Mark, my only question, so I just want to make sure that I thoroughly understand this. At this point, we are just creating this classification in our lists of pay grades. If somebody's hired, if more money, or if you seek to hire and you need more money, you would have to come back to the board to amend anything and, you know, to amend our budget and do whatever.
Not necessarily. What happens is, is when you approve the classification pay plan, if I'm telling you tonight, which I am, that this is going to be probably a net zero position, why don't I just say it's going to be a net zero add for the department? So if he started with 116, he's going to be at the end of the year with 116 unless the board makes a change, that this position will probably have a very minimal budgetary impact, as I said to Mr. Kinsey, $8,000 to $10,000 of maybe budgetary impact. Now, we never fully fund, and I know to some board members, this has always been kind of an issue, but some of you, it may not be, but from a budgetary standpoint, we never fully fund the salaries line item for the police department due to the continuous attrition and people leaving and vacant positions open each and every year. I mean, if you look at the history of the department, those typical rollovers, I mean, even before even our chief came, there's always been movement within those ranks, people going to different positions, leaving everything else. That to take an organization that would cost the budget $4.5 million in just salaries line item when every single year they're operating at about a four to 4.1 range, it doesn't really make sense because of that to fund it completely at that point. That's what we do. Otherwise, you're gonna need to come up with that money. But so to get to my point basically is, is that you're talking about a net zero position. You are amending the classification plan to add it to the schedule. That affords me the ability to add the direction to chief to advertise or hire this position if he's hiring it from within as a promotionary type move. And then at that point, unless I needed a significant amount of money, which we're not, since it's probably going to be a net zero, then I would not foresee needing to come to the board for a budgetary amendment.
Thank you.
So if you're, yeah, so if, what you're saying, if you are able to maintain the staffing level with the deputy chief's position, you're planning on doing that. Is that correct? I mean, I thought we were looking at maybe eliminating another officer's position and not another, maybe a lieutenant's position or something at some point in time.
We would have to do that. Otherwise, if I advertise this position, when I say net zero, that means there's probably going to be one position that goes away to make for the added position here. So when I say net zero, otherwise, I'd be saying we're adding a position. And your budget amendment at that point would probably need to happen for sure because it would be a hundred and some thousand dollar position, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollar position plus benefits. So we're talking about $130,000, you know, budget amendment that would be necessary. What I'm telling you this is, is a net zero, which means a position goes away to add this position, ultimately meaning 116 before, 116 after, with very minimal budgetary impact.
But at no time, there'll be 117.
That is correct. At no time, there will be 117.
I agree with this. I think the police department needs the position. And I also think that we need to start looking for the same problem that's occurring in the fire department. They had the deputy chief's position and it was taken away. And I think at some point in time, and you and I discussed this, I think at some point in time, we need to think about getting that position back to the fire department as well.
And it is definitely something of long-range plan that we have, myself and Bobby have been looking at.
Thank you.
My question for, so with this process, once this happens, it will be posted internally first? Or do we already have someone in line to be promoted to this?
That's kind of up to me.
Chief, can I ask you? I just want to know the process and how it works. Do you, do we already have somebody in mind, or is it going to be posted internally for people to do interviews, or how is this going to work?
Typically, a deputy chief is more of an appointment of the chief of police base rather than a competitive process.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve, to amend the classification pay plan for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Dingle.
Alderman Dingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Stevens, item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is consideration of board to adopt a resolution to approve a license agreement with the New Bern Area Improvements Association Incorporated. Prior to being substantially damaged during Hurricane Florence, Parks and Recreation Department offered several programs at Stanley White Recreation Center. There has been discussions over the last several months with the owner of the Omega Center about the possibility of conducting some of these programs at their facility throughout the week. The Omega Center is located in the same neighborhood as Stanley White Recreation Center. As a matter of fact, it's several blocks down, maybe five, six blocks down from where its current location is, and would be convenient, obviously, for the area residents who are within walking or biking distance to continue those programs at that location. The license agreement that's before you tonight proposes a three-year term at a rate of $85,000 over that three years. And the Omega Center shall provide all water, sewer, and electric utilities, but the city will reimburse the cost of those utilities on a monthly basis at a sum equal to forty, I'm sorry, 57.14% of what that amount is. Reasonably 57.14 is chosen under the license agreement. You'll notice the use of the building will be for four days out of a seven-day week. If you do four divided by seven, that's 57.14%. So we would cover the cost of the utilities during the time in which we're in there. Additionally, the Omega Center shall make specified improvements to the property and will be responsible for all routine repairs and maintenance on the property. The city will be responsible for the mowing and maintaining of the grass landscaping for our use of that particular facility. There's memos in your packet along with the license agreement. And the terms of the agreement are spelled out within that, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mark.
Yes, sir.
I've heard little rumors about this here event, but coming to a board, with me being a board member, I haven't been informed very well about this event. And I'd like to sit down with you and talk a little bit more about this information, even though I was given it. But I have questions that I would like to ask you as a board, to vote with the board
Sure.
to understand more what's in depth and what's actually taking place. Because I'm a member of this board as well. It's just I haven't been informed like the other individuals have been informed.
I'm happy to sit down and talk with you anytime.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to table this until I can vote equally with the rest of the board to get the same information. Oh, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have a motion. Alderman Kinsey would like to table this item. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it out of respect that if he wasn't privy to the information prior to this decision, that he has a right to know what's going on.
Thank you.
And may I ask whether, why he was not privy to the information or the contract, or?
I will tell you that each and every single one of our board members approached me about various things that they want to pursue and have on the agenda. Typically, it requires two. I had two. It was placed on the agenda. And in most cases, when the agenda goes out, I have the expectation as a city manager that the board is going to review those items, and that if they have questions, they can feel free to give me a call. I'm happy to answer any kind of questions you may have. That's the reason why we send out the agenda ahead of time so that people can have ideas. It's the reason why we send out the pre-agenda prior to that. So I'm more than happy, if, Mr. Kinsey, if you would like to set aside some time, just like I've done for Alderman Dingle, a certain day of the week at a certain time that you'd like to come to my office to go over some things that you want to know, I'm more than happy to do that. I'm more than happy to do that with anybody.
This is a different situation now.
This is a motion, so we're in discussion. Would you like to add to this, sir? Please, I'd just like to ask you a question. If delaying this, if we delay this, would this have an effect on the programs for the kids?
Obviously, I think it will. There are certain things and improvements that need to be made to the, to the particular property in order for us to use it, handicap accessibility being one of them. There's some modifications to the restrooms that need to happen. There's some eradication issues that need to be taken care of at a particular location, and those are some of the things that are spelled out in Exhibit A that need to be addressed, along with some parking issues. We have discussed these in length, and like I said, I'm more than willing to sit down with anyone. And I would hope that the board communicates with one another as well to push things along.
Well, I think that's what the issue is because I was in the first meeting, and then I was never CC'd on anything that happened after that. So I can understand where he's coming from because this is a big decision to, for all of us to vote on in regards to the deal that's being done. So I feel like if it's not going to hinder the process by two weeks.
All the information you got, it's out here.
First of all, this is, this is in Ward 1.
Yeah, I mean, I know about it.
Yeah. Yeah, the issue is, it was attached. It was in the pre-agenda. It was in the agenda packet that went out. And I don't understand, Alderman Kinsey, if you've gotten wind of something, you can easily pick up the phone and call me or the city manager. This has been on the books. I think we've talked about this several times at one of the meetings, and I'd be happy to go back and view the audio where I believe Alderman Best asked, what's going on with the Omega Center? Are we moving forward? Are we trying to get something done so we can have programs? So it has been out there. You have had every opportunity to approach myself, the city manager, whatever.
Very good statement.
Alderman Harris, you have the same ability to approach us at any time, to ask a question. If there's something going on in your ward that I have to vote on and I'm uncomfortable about it, I will pick up the phone and I will call you. I don't know everything that happens in the fourth ward. Not my job to know everything in the fourth ward. But it's my job to do my homework and to read the agenda and to make myself familiar with the items on the agenda.
Can I tack on this, Alderman Kinsey?
Please.
We know that this needs to happen for the simple fact that that community is lacking a community center. The Omega Center has stepped up to the plate and is willing to help out the city. And in that, obviously, things need to be fixed so that the kids can play there. If outside of that information, you would still be wanting to vote yes to support because we need these programs.
Absolutely, I would be able to. I want to do that, but I would like to get, it's like Alderman Dingle always used transparents. So I'm just trying to get a understanding. My time is not like her time. I use my time accordingly. So if I didn't read it at the same time she read hers, that's not my responsibility. When I got to the information, I read it, and then tonight, I made a statement about it. So what seems to be your problem?
My problem is that we're trying to move something forward that the community has asked for, that as the alderman of the ward, I am supportive and helping to facilitate, as I do in my ward. And I would like to see us move forward, so.
But I don't need you to make a decision for me, but I need to do it.
There's a motion and a second on the table, and I'm calling the question.
Yeah, okay.
I want to say something first before we move forward. I can understand where Alderman Kinsey is coming from because I have made the very same statement to this board before. Each alderman, we have a lot going on in our wards. And if there's something that's pertinent to this, some type of business that's really pertinent, I think that even though it's not in my ward, I should be contacted. I should receive some type of emails or something before the pre-agenda comes out because there may be meetings that I might want to go to, even though it's not in my ward. Now, I understand that, and I made that statement before, that I feel that we as aldermen, we should be included in anything that goes on in all six wards. So I understand where it's coming from. I didn't know anything about this until I was meeting two clients, two of my constituents over in Duffy Field, one one in about 7:30, and I passed by the Henderson Park, saw those children out there at that park. And the next one I got, I went back home, I sent out emails. And I sent an email to Alderman Dingle as well because I wasn't satisfied with that situation of seeing those children out there at Henderson Park in that heat. And I also sent it to Thurman as well, and Thurman, he, Foster, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Thurman.
Damn.
Foster, I'm sorry. Thurman must be talking about me. Foster, and he sent me back a reply, and he filled me in on what was going on with the Omega Center. That's how I found out. And I would like to be, I agree with you 100%. I would like to be involved in anything that's going on in any ward in this city because we serve the entire city of New Bern.
Is that what the reports are about? I guess that's why we've asked the city manager now to give us those weekly reports. You know, and I've offered to send my information to them because it is difficult. And you know, you've contacted me about a couple of things and said, thank you for helping me out. It does get overwhelming. There's a lot going on. But at this point, you know, we have a motion.
It was in the weekly report.
I just, I just want to know.
I know it wasn't.
One comment, Mayor, that I think it would be, I think it would be beneficial for everybody if instead of Alderman Kinsey meeting with the manager individually to talk about this project, why won't we talk about it now?
Yeah, I was just, I was just about to say.
Open.
Whatever questions.
We've got staff here to answer our questions. I think for the public's benefit, it would be better for us to do that.
Rather than table it, absolutely. The representatives are here if you have questions.
So I'll move my motion where we can openly speak, okay?
Are you removing your motion?
Yes.
And the second?
I'll remove my second.
Okay, so we're in the discussion, and Mr. Kinsey, I'll let you have the floor. It's more of a comment.
Thank you.
Maybe get Mr. Hughes up here to, go ahead, sir.
Okay, you said, break it down again to me, please, Mr. Manager, on the, you said they would pay us money, they would keep up the maintenance on the building? The improvements to be made to the building are requirements that we need as a city to operate at that particular location. We are paying them $85,000 for lease of the facility for a three-year period, four days out of the week, every single week for three years.
Okay, hold on. So that's $85,000 total for three years, okay?
$85,000 total for a three-year lease, four out of seven days a week.
Okay.
Okay? What upkeep do we have to do for that? The upkeep responsibility, as it was stated, was the routine repairs and maintenance on the property are the responsibility of the Omega Center. Okay. We will be maintaining the landscaping and mowing the grass for them during this time period, the three-year period. That's all that we would do, the roof and the landscape?
And a percentage of the utilities.
Not, not the roof. Did you say the roof? No, he said routine.
Routine maintenance. Oh, routine. There are improvements to the facility that will be required for us to do. And how much is the night bill per month? That's a great question. It has been running unoccupied around 400 a month, what'd you say? About 400 a month. The highest that, I looked at the utility bills back to 1998, and the highest utility bill was, was $1,000, I think. That was one month, and it was actually back, it was because there was two, a payment that was on there that shouldn't have been on there that was actually paid for the next month and corrected. Yeah, something to that effect, yeah, sir. So essentially, you're still talking about the same $500 a month since about 1998, average. So, so we're going in to do work inside the building as well? Maintenance work, like, you know, the bathrooms need to be upgraded, the floor need to be upgraded, the stage need to be upgraded. That's what the $85,000 is being spent for, that we're paying them. They're going to upgrade the facility. With that money? With that money.
So we're paying them to upgrade the facility so we can use it. We're taking care of the lawn, and then utilities, we're giving them a 57.14 decrease.
That, we're paying our proportionate share for the usage of the building during the week, four out of seven days.
But we're not paying them, we're paying the utilities.
It's a reimbursement. They pay the utilities, they send us the bill, and we reimburse them 57.14% of whatever that bill amount is. So if it's $1,000, we would pay them $571.40.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hughes, could you provide us with an update on the programs that we lost because of the loss of Stanley White Center and what our participation rates and some of the historical data would be?
Yes, sir. When the Stanley White Recreation Center closed, we transferred every program. We based those over at West New Bern Recreation Center. So the only, only programs that we stopped offering were the fitness weight room classes and a fitness class, and that's it. Everything else transferred. Our participation in all of those classes stayed the same with the exception of the YES Summer Camp, which has increased by 25% at West New Bern. And what we do with the YES Camp is that, that is a program where we pick the kids up at Henderson Park. They play on the playground for about 30 to 40 minutes until all the kids get there. And then we take them to whatever field trip they have for the day, or swimming, or over to West New Bern. And then they're either taken back by bus or the parents pick them up. So we haven't, we haven't, only the fitness classes are the ones we've displaced.
Thank you. And then as far as the breakdown on the financials, Mayor, you're probably better at figuring this than I am. But looking at four days a week for three years, price per square foot is $2.15. And from a real estate standpoint, that's very reasonable. And I think I'm probably safe to say that we're, we've got staff that would normally be at Stanley White, so we're not adding staff. It's going to be personnel neutral, if you will. They'll just be working on a different location.
That's correct. The staff that was over at Stanley White Recreation Center has been moved over to West New Bern. So when we have activities and programs at the Omega Center, that staff will be there monitoring those programs.
Thank you. And last comment, I appreciate the effort that you and your staff has done in order to maintain and actually increase the level of participation from these folks. And certainly understand that it was a localized building in that community that is no longer there. But I'm pleased to see that at least we were able to maintain that same level of service. So thank you for your efforts. So, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, any, yes, ma'am?
I don't have, I have, I think this needs to be returned here. I mean, because it's saying that the license agreement proposes a three-year term at a rate of $85,000. I could really take that as a rate of $85,000 per year. I think it's just a verbity of the way it's reading.
Should say at a total rate, a total.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, a total rate of 85,000 for a three-year term. Um, also, I am all for this. I think it's, it's really good, because it's in the areas, in the greater five-point double-foot area, the children can actually walk to the center. Um, but I'm having a little problem with the monthly amount that we're paying of the utility bills, and the reason why I say that is because they're only paying 40 percent of that monthly utility bill. But now, that center is going to have functions or something on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, so you're looking at a lot more consumption of utilities and water and stuff. So I'm, I'm just having a problem with us paying 57 percent, even though I know we're going Monday through Thursday, but, you know, I look at the other utilization that's going to be, that, that building is, with events and everything going on there, that, I mean, that's 43 percent they're only paying. So y'all equating into this just Monday through Friday usage. And what about, what about the, the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
We're equating into this, our, our lease agreement specifies that we will have exclusive use of the facility four out of seven days a week. There are seven days in a week. We will use it four out of the seven days, which equates to 57.14 percent. The other 42.86 percent would be the responsibility, which would cover the Friday, Saturday, Sunday usage of that facility, and they would have to pay that portion of the bill. We're paying for the four days that we're there, so that's the 57.14 percent.
Mark, I get what you're saying, but I'm also understanding what she's saying. Either way, I'm supporting this, but if you, unless you have proof of how it's, the utilities is going to be utilized, like if we did a study, hold on. The use that happens Friday, Saturday, and Sunday could be more than what she used during Sunday, so that's what she's saying is, okay, are we out, are we overpaying? That's what she's trying to say.
Yep.
And is there pay as you go?
Sure, and, and conversely, we could use it more than, than, you know, and put more burden on them.
Well, either way, this is how I feel. They have the, it's, it's, it's a brick and mortar. They have the supply, it's on demand, we need it, it's not for us, it's for the community. So regardless of whatever deal has to be struck, we need to have it, so...
And keep in mind, we're not paying the utilities on Stanley White.
Yeah, exactly, so, I mean, it is.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution to approve a license agreement with the New Bern Area Improvements Association.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is consideration to board adopt a resolution of support for the installation of split side-street signal phasing at the intersection of U.S. Highway 70 East and Thurman Road, at the request of Alderman Astor, who has been involved in conversations with Craven County Commissioner Denny Booker regarding safety concerns at the intersection of Highway 70 East and Thurman Road. Um, before you tonight is a suggested, uh, resolution to be adopted by the board to indicate the city's support of NCDOT installing a split-side-street signal at this intersection. Uh, Craven County adopted a similar resolution of support at their July 15, 2019 meeting, and it was requested, uh, by Alderman Astor and supported by, uh, another board member, that, uh, we could place this on the agenda for the board's consideration. And for those that don't understand what a side, or a, I guess, a split-side-street signal phasing is, essentially what you have at Highway 70 west, or east, and Thurman Road is a intersection that doesn't necessarily align properly. It does not allow for a very safe turning movement during the green phase of the Thurman Road inter, interchange. So essentially, it causes cars to kind of sit there and have a guessing chicken match, I guess, of which way they're going to turn, or what they're going to do, or whether somebody's going to go straight. It causes cars to sit out in the interstate, intersection, and cause a significant safety issue. Uh, I personally got hit at that particular location as well, doing the same thing. Um, what this will do is, it will cause the signalized intersection to make movements of one direction of traffic, then the other direction of traffic, and then open up Highway 70 through both ways. That's essentially what it's going to be doing. Uh, but it allows for safer movements of cars coming out of the Carolina Colors neighborhood, cars coming off of the other side of the street where the Ace Hardware and the gas station and all that is on the James City side of the, the intersection, and then it opens up for Highway 70 to move out.
So this is, um, I have a question. So we would do a resolution of support, doesn't mean it's going to get done, it has to go before NCDOT?
Correct. We met out on site with, um, several of the officials with NCDOT, Mr. Booker and county officials. They, they agree that something needs to be done. They, they've given us an estimated cost as to what it would take to, to correct it. Um, and, and they just requested that we support them in this way, so...
And, and keep in mind, too, this interchange is slated for an overpass whenever the Highway 70 project is completed. So this will be, you know, several years in, that it will be in place if it gets approved and installed by NCDOT. So it'll be in there for several years until the completion of the Highway 70 project.
At, at very minimal cost?
Yes.
I mean, they're, they're saying the estimate costs less than $10,000, and if that, I mean, there's been some terrible rigs there.
Right, I agree.
Okay, um, then, let me get back to where I'm at here. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting a resolution in support of the installation of a split-side-street signal phasing at the intersection of U.S. Highway 70 East and Thurman Road.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingel.
Alderman Bingel, yes. Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 10.
Item number 10 is submission of tax collector's annual settlement for tax year 2018. North Carolina General Statute 105-373 requires the tax collector to furnish to the board an annual settlement of property taxes. Mr. Antry, with the Craven County Tax Administrator, has provided a statement revealing this total for 2018 and the amended tax levy, uh, which was $13,334,949.79. As of the 30th of June 2019, uh, the tax collector had collected $13,238,730.63, which represents a 99.28 percent collection rate. Uh, the amount delinquent as of that date was $96,219.16. In addition, uh, this also includes our municipal service tax district. The, uh, tax levy on that particular district was $195,977.75. As of the 30th of June, uh, the tax collector had collected $195,596.51, which also, uh, equates to a collection rate of 99.81 percent. Uh, the amount remaining, uh, delinquent as of the 30th of June was $381.34, 24 cents, which is, uh, a very good collection rate. Uh, so the board has asked to make a motion to accept this settlement report from Mr. Antry at the tax clerk.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm really, um, pleased to see the collection rate. Um, the county's, um, doing an excellent job. I can look back in the budget and find these, this number out, but I know you have it handy, so I want to ask you, Mr. JR, what are we paying the county, the city paying the county for the collection of taxes?
It's approximately $135,360.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Savatelli, I believe it's public record, um, the accounts that are delinquent, is that correct? Is that something when you receive that information, you could share with the board, so we would know?
Yes, sir.
I know we've seen that sometimes in the past, sometimes we haven't. And my, my last question is, I don't know that this is the case, but if there is an account that is delinquent, what, what legal actions do we take, if any, on properties that are delinquent in taxes?
Ultimately, it goes through the tax foreclosure process.
So if we're 99.3 percent roughly, that .7 percent will eventually probably pay sometime throughout the year, or either we'll have a foreclosure that will come before us?
Yes, yes. There are, as you probably know, there are some cases where the cost of foreclosure greatly exceeds the $100 or $200 that we might recover, but generally, yes.
Thank you.
Do we need to take any action on this?
Uh, the board's asking to make a motion to accept the settlement report.
Mayor? Second.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. And you made the second?
Yes.
Would you like a roll call on this? Um, I'm in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries, item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is consideration to board adopt an ordinance to amend Section 66-85 of Chapter 66 for city-sponsored events. Um, as you recall, on 14th of May, uh, this past, uh, this past year, the board adopted an ordinance amending Section 66-85 regarding city-sponsored events after receiving a request to move the 2019 Duff Fest from May to June. Um, this was a one-time request, after which, uh, the desire was to restore the event to its normal month of May. Uh, now that the 2019 event has been done, since this is law, and as an ordinance, it is required for us to restore that back to its original place. What I do have in your packet, though, and I heard at that meeting, was that the board may wish to just remove the months altogether. Uh, it doesn't change the, the nomenclature as far as the names of the events, but there's two options in your packet. One, that restores it back to the way it was, where it puts the Duff Fest back at its normal month of May. There's one option where you can choose to just have the list of city-sponsored events, but it removes the months altogether.
Yes.
So I have both of those options. The, the city attorney prepared both of those at my request, so they're both in your packet. And, uh, at this point, the board's asked to, to choose one or the other, or whatever the board wishes to do.
That's perfect, um, thank you, Mayor, because what, I've been so busy, um, trying to recover from third-degree burns and outside with Kidsville, that I did not get a chance to get ahold of Ms. Carol Williams in regards to ask her if she wanted it changed, because I was going to ask to put it on hold. But if the board, um, pleasure is to just change and remove the months, I think that will be easy, and we can go ahead and take care of this line item, because I haven't had a chance to get ahold of her unless we table it and we bring it back on next agenda.
And, and just one of the things, just from a history standpoint of why the months were on there, the months were done such that it spread out city-sponsored events throughout the year. I still would urge the board to strongly consider, whenever someone requests a city-sponsored event, that we look at these, consider what months things are occurring, because if somebody looks to want to do something the third week of October, well, you guess what? The second week of October, we just spent a heck of a lot of time, with staff time and everything else, putting together mum fest. So we, we, we really need to pay attention still on what the months are, but we, we as staff know when those events are, we're going to have that. But if, if you get approached or have any consideration at any point to consider changing city-sponsored event, keep that in mind.
If the board doesn't mind me countering this, or if there's not any issue countering it until the next board meeting, as a general item, for me to ask them, so we, all we have to do, and they say it's fine to do it this way, or change it to June, what would be the next step? Do they need to come, do we need to change it to May, and then they come and finalize it to June? Or just change it to June?
I think what you're saying is, if we don't put, we, if we adopt the version that says no months...
But I understand what Mark's saying.
Okay.
Even though staff knows, you know, it...
The public might not.
Right, so we might need to keep the months and just...
I think the issue is, is if, if, it's more of a naming type situation, where it's been known as Duff Fest this year, it was Duff Fest combined with Juneteenth. If that is the plan for the future, then do you call it Duff Fest? Do you call it Juneteenth? Do you do a slash, something like that? So you combine them into that one event, but it's only going to be that one event, you wouldn't split them at that point.
Okay, so does the board mind if we table this? Allow me the time to talk to Ms. Williams to see?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table this agenda, I, this agenda item for the next meeting.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Uh, item number 12, appointments, Mr. Odom, do you have appointments?
No, sir.
Alderman Bass?
Yes, I do. Um, Ms. Barbara Sampson was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board, but she desired not to, um, be on that board, so she declined, and she actually wants to be on the Board of Adjustments. So I would like, um, the board to consider, as far as Sampson, for the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries, do you have others?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, sir, I have, um, two appointments tonight. I have Ms. Bedd Life, uh, to, uh, appoint her to the Farm and Museum. Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
My second person is Victor Taylor, to the Police Civil Service Board.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Do you have others?
That is it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Astor?
I did have one, but I think I need to hold off on it, because when his email, when he emailed his resume to me, he emailed it as a resume for planning and sending it. So I just wanted to make sure that he's, um, I was asking about the Board of Adjustments, so I'll hold off on it, since I confirm with him.
Okay, Alderman Harris?
None at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Bingel?
No, sir.
Okay, it's time, do we have an attorney's report tonight?
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report.
I just have one real quick thing. I think, um, uh, I wanted to touch real quickly on the hurricane preparedness to put the, uh, uh, board at ease, since it was at the request of Alderman Kinsey, who came into my office, uh, I think, was that earlier, uh, last, late last week, to, uh, request that we do this. Uh, so the hurricane preparedness, just so what, obviously, you know, we had our expo, uh, that we put that on to kind of help out the community. Um, w- we're always trying to continually improve our process and our, our, our progress as far as our response during storms. Um, Bobby Boye, Fire Chief, has been instrumental each and every year of developing and coordinating the emergency operations plan for the city. Uh, we went through a pretty detailed, uh, revision of that some, uh, probably, what, three years ago, Chief? Is that correct? Um, and each year subsequently, we, uh, look at that document, and we go through it, analyze it to ensure that any changes have been made, that we need to make those changes, and we do that as far as our internal and our external emergency response on how we, we take care of disaster-type events, who's in charge for particular tasks, and, and everything else that the city does. In addition to that, there were lessons learned, obviously, that we had during Hurricane, uh, Hurricane Florence, uh, that we wanted to discuss. Since then, we have had multiple staff meetings where we had some, some working lunches that we all sat down at the table, worked for three, three hours at a time, um, and, uh, tried to come up with some best management practices and some thought processes on what could we do better internally to address some of our issues. Some of the major issues that came out of that was, you know, feeding staff when there's no restaurants open, and appropriate ways to do that, making sure that we follow the theme and process, so that we get reimbursed for it. Um, hotels, hotels was a disaster during this last event. Thank goodness Jordan and, and, uh, Jordan, his, his staff handled a significant portion of finding hotels, lots of different departments. So what we're trying to do is get a centralized system to where we don't have multiple dark departments fighting over the same hotel rooms that might be available. It's going to be more centralized now, doing some of that. Uh, same thing with the food situation. So we were probably going to do some contractual arrangements with, with food, because that is something that is critical to ensure that people are eating, people are sleeping, and all that stuff. If you're going to continue to get the massive amounts of work that you have to, as a staff member, come and put out during these emergency response events. So lots of those different things came to light. Those are two of the big ones that came to light. There's also some, some standard practices as far as protocols when, when it comes to our, our radio systems. That's something else we talked about, Mayor. You've mentioned several times, that go back to the old CB radios or whatever. I mean, uh, whether, whether that's practical or not, those are some of the things that we're bouncing as far as emergency operations and, and planning process, about what can we do? If the generator runs out over a wind hill and the, the, the radio goes out, I can tell you, you've heard it from Wilmington. Wilmington lost their 911 system. We only lost ours for a short period of time while we went over and put some gas in it. Wilmington lost theirs for hours and hours and hours. Uh, so it, that, we weren't alone in that situation. Both of us were struggling during this. I mean, this was a catastrophic, you know, once-in-a-lifetime event that we'll probably never see again, at least I hope I don't. Um, so we're doing some things internally that we're doing as far as our hurricane preparedness. Another thing that we did just today, as a matter of fact, and Colleen's in there with the PEG channel, but just today with our IT staff and Colleen, every single year, we test the Emergency Operations Center to ensure that we have the ability to both broadcast and the fact that we have all of our systems working, where the police department can have their CAD running, and the fact that we have all of our systems working where the police department can have their CAD running, and we can get all of our CAD systems from our nine-one-one center located there. So if we need to transfer calls, or we need dispatch calls from those particular locations, that we're ready and prepared and all the technology's working the way it should. All the phone systems are working, all the computer IT infrastructure's working. So all of that stuff, we do every single year to ensure that we're prepared to respond, not just for a hurricane, but for any event. So we start preparing that, and we do that throughout the year. We do emergency operations plans for mum fest. Many of you probably don't even know that. We do that for, for mum fest because of the massive amounts of people we have and the fact that you have crowd control. And we need to make sure and be able to maintain crowd control and safety of our citizens when they're attending a fun event like mum fest. So, there's lots of things that we do throughout the year to maintain preparedness, not just for hurricanes, but any kind of disaster or, or events that could happen in our city. I mean, we could have a tornado that could pop up in ten minutes, you know, and we have to be ready to respond to that. So all of those things kind of happen. We could have a train wreck out here at the, at the, at the yard that spills some chemicals we have to be able to respond to. So all of that is in our emergency operations plan. We go through those events. We do some exercises. Last year, we actually went through a real full mock hurricane exercise. And funny thing was, is I was actually going to a conference at the time, they called it Hurricane Mark. So, and, and I'm glad that they had that event, because three months later, they had a hurricane that was called Hurricane Florence that we had to respond to accordingly. And our staff, I think, probably benefited a great deal from that. So, a lot of those things are what we're doing. There's another thing that we're talking about. We had a, as y'all know, the Code Red system. We're implementing a new system. I, I wish I was a lot more knowledgeable about it, but we just approved it. Colleen has done the research on it. It's called the Rave System. This Rave System provides where we can actually get text responses, we can get the phone calls. All of this stuff comes through the Code Red system. It's a little bit more technologically savvy. And it comes at a little bit of a reduced cost. I know Chief and Chief, both of them have both been briefed on it as far as that, that system goes. But its function is just the same as our Code Red system, and we'll be able to migrate everybody that's part of the Code Red into this new system. So lots of different things that we're doing. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the hurricane preparedness.
Mark, from the information you just given just now, if someone is listening to the broadcast, what is the number that they can call and receive the same information if they want to share it with someone else that's interested in learning what we are able to do now and the new things that we have learned from the old mistakes that we made? What number can they call to learn something, to get some more information?
I mean, they can, they could probably call my office, that would be a good one, or I would probably put that on the, the Fire Chief. Chief is kind of our somewhat designated emergency operations chief, I guess if you want to call it that as well.
Can you give those two numbers, please?
Sure. The number, my number, direct number is two-five-two-six-three-nine-two-seven-zero-zero. And the Fire Chief, his number is two-five-two-six-three-nine...
Two-nine-three-zero.
Two-nine-three-zero. I use a different internal number.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Stevens, I know we, we just recently had our first hurricane preparedness expo. Could you share, I don't know if you have any stats or not, about how many people attended that, or how many participants we had, anything you can share with the public?
Sure. If, if I recall correctly, we had a close hundred fifty to two hundred, I think, that attended the event, which I think is a pretty successful event considering it was the first time that we did it. And what I found very interesting is I was watching, I was flipping through Twitter the other day, and Wilmington did their expo. And I don't know whether they copied us, or they thought about it, or saw what we did, but they had an expo just like ours last week. So, I, I, hopefully, I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve as far as our proactiveness and what we're doing to help our citizens prepare for the hurricane season and quite frankly, any kind of disaster-type events, because we held ours back about two months ago, I guess, or a month, month and a half ago. As far as vendors, we had about thirty-two vendors, twenty-five vendors that attended. Multiple of our city departmental staffs, I know that UBO was there, we had our electric department over there, we had Public Works that had some, some, some presence there. Parks and Recreation, I mean, we had a lot of different development services, a lot of your staff was there. So, so...
Police, police and fires.
Police and fire, obviously, yeah, they're going to be there. But we had our presence there, we had a lot of different organizations, Redaktors, Recovery, CCDRA folks were there. Some of our insurance-related groups were there, so I mean, we had a good, good coverage of during the expo.
My own update, I'll go with your meeting in Wallace.
Yes, Eastern North Carolina Recovery and Residency Alliance, as they're calling themselves. Myself and, and Alderman Odom went on behalf of the mayor who couldn't attend that day. But we went down to Wallace, North Carolina. There were probably a good, what, forty to fifty different mayors and elected officials represented at that particular meeting, along with some of the managers. And it seems as if the coalition is, is really gathering some, some significant backing and headway. I sent it out to multiple organizations that we are surrounded by, kind of the liaison, if you want to call me that, for the alliance here in the northern portion of the southeast area of North Carolina. Tony McEwen, who is the Governmental Affairs Officer for the city of Wilmington, is kind of handling a good bit of that area. And then, there's another lady who's handling some of the coordination around the Duplin County's area, the Pender County areas. So, a lot of us have been, kind of in this group, emailing messages, trying to get together at these events. And it was a well-attended event. I think they covered a significant amount of, of the initiatives that the, the group wants to try to complete, as well as representatives from Senator Burr's office, Senator Tillis's office, Congressman Rousers' office, the North Carolina newly-formed North Carolina Disaster Recovery, I guess they call it, the, the, what is it? Residency and Recovery, yeah. INCOR, I think is what they're calling themselves. That's directed by Mr. Spraberry at the state level, appointment of the governor. They're represented there. So there was a very significant representation there to continue to focus on Eastern North Carolina's recovery and residency for the future when it comes to disaster preparedness. If you want to add anything else, you can, but...
Yeah, it was obviously a lot of information. For the first time being there, Mayor, you, you've attended quite a few more than I have. But I guess the, one of the most disappointing takeaways that I had is the fact of funding that has been released by the federal government to the state of North Carolina and the politics that's being played with how that money gets dispersed. There's new, new divisions and groups that's been created, and there's all these new buzzwords about all the nice things that they're doing. But the reality is, is there's a lot of money there, and it hasn't been given to municipalities and the counties and the townships that need it. And I, I, I think it's, it's always sad, and I've always said this as I've been up here, that when you mix politics and public safety, it's a dangerous slope. And it's unfortunate. That's some of the games that's being played. But I would implore our state representatives and elected officials to work on getting that money down to where we need it, because we desperately do.
And that, and that even goes to the point of CDBG due to our funds from Hurricane Matthew. That's still, there's a significant amount of, of those funds that have not been dispersed. There's a lot of complaints even about that. But there's homes that haven't even been fixed from Hurricane Matthew, and then they get damaged again, and those funds still sit there. And as I forwarded on to all of the board members, we just received our final payouts for Hurricane Matthew, and we weren't even significantly impacted as some of the other communities were.
But we still have some over on Irene.
Actually, we've closed that one out now, I think, haven't we? Or we're getting close to it.
Those projects have been released by the CRC and hopefully will be all beginning very soon.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're close to getting those finalized. The Irene, I guess that's what I was thinking.
Stevens, I want to update again publicly on the Lawson Creek docks and things. I think they're about to get finished up, aren't they, Mr. Stevens?
Lawson Creek docks are done.
Yeah.
Those have been completed now. Both, both of our boat ramps are open and operational. Both the first one on the left and the one at the end, we were able to recover finally the, the dock section that had floated up underneath the Twin Spand Bridge, or not Twin Spand, but the Trent River Bridges. We are actually able to, to get those back, utilize the existing piers it was. We had to scab on, scab off some stuff and then replace it, but eventually we drove some, some new pilings down. We're going to be extending those to make them a little bit better as far as, so they don't float off again. But those are, we, we actually just had our contractor that's been down there, and that's, so that's back in place and operational at this time.
Did they float over the, the pilons?
Yes.
And how, and how deep or how high were the pilons? Were they eight foot?
At least, I would say probably. There they were.
I think they were at least ten feet.
I think they were ten.
Ten feet. So we had more than ten feet of water over there?
Oh, yeah, we had about thirteen, if you count the waves, actually.
I want to bring up one more thing about your, your emergency operation plan. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, years ago, I'm talking about back during Vertha and before the, those hurricanes, we had every one of our traffic control signals wired with a transfer switch. And we had a beaucoup full of, of little thirty-five hundred or five KW generators, little portable generators. And during the hurricane, when the power went out, we went out, we chained them to the box, we plugged them in, and we ran the intersection traffic lights for days and days and days. And I mean, that's a tremendous amount of personnel that's involved in doing traffic control. I remember sitting up there at the intersection of Simmons Street and East Boulevard, and it was, I think there's probably three or four police officers in that intersection. And when we, we hooked that generator up and turned it on, it was, it just worked perfectly. It's a, it's, you know, the price of a generator and a hundred-dollar transfer switch or whatever, and, and it will, it will run them and, and free up a lot of manpower. So, you might want to consider that. Anything else? Okay, let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited. Obviously, everyone knows, we did Kidsville, not me, we, but Kidsville was rebuilt, well, it's in the process. And I had the privilege of working hand-to-hand with the city employees. And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I quit on them Saturday and Sunday. And I am just, it was amazing. They worked in that heat, and I just, if they can hear me, see me, I have personally built relationships with them. Some by name, Mr. Rodney, Torrance, Kayvon, his nickname is Speedy, someone's named Fluffy. I mean, all of the staff with Parks and Rec was amazing. The utilities came out. We saw so many firefighters come out. We had the police there, the single Marines, and all of the other citizens that came out and helped. I personally, because I'm the alderman that represents that ward, just want to thank everyone that came out to put blood, sweat, and tears in rebuilding. And I want to give hats off to you, Foster. You are amazing. You did a wonderful job under the circumstances, the heat and everything, and all, everyone that came out and donated and fed us. I will tell you, that was some hard work. I mean, literally some hard work. I have second, three, four-degree burn, but it was, it was a blessing for everybody that came out. And if you could just come up and give us an update on where we're at, I would love to hear it.
Well, you know, the first thing I want to say is we had over four hundred fifty volunteers to come out last week. And Parks and Recreation staff was out there literally the Friday before, getting prepped for when the consultants from Leathers and Associates came in. We had a meeting that Monday evening where we went over with the consultants the game plan for Tuesday through Sunday. And the goal was for the playground to basically be completed by five PM on Sunday. And of course, it didn't help that we had a hundred-plus degree weather every single day. But on average, we had fifty people at any given time, and we worked this in three shifts from eight to twelve, twelve-thirty to five, and then five-thirty to nine PM each evening. If we would've had all of our volunteers, the playground would have just about been completed. But considering that we had the, the number we did, very, very excited with the progress we made. And, and I do want to say, Fire Rescue, Police, Water Resources, Electric Department, they had crews that did come out and did, did at least one thing, one, one project for us or another. Fire Rescue was there every single day. We had representatives from other departments that came on their own time, and so we appreciated them. And I just want to mention the volunteer groups that came out. We had the Baptist Men, Berry the Hatchet Axe Throwing Company, the Boys and Girls Club, Camp Seagull, Seafair, Epiphany School, First Baptist Church, Habitat for Humanity, Keller Williams Realty, New Bern Yacht Club, Moeen, the National Guard, the Scouts, and the Single Marines were there every day as well. And so, and I do want to say, my Parks and Recreation staff, they worked pretty darn hard. Because I, I pushed them pretty, I pushed them pretty hard. I told them they needed to stay from literally seven o'clock in the morning till eight-thirty at night. They didn't complain, they worked hard, and we've got a little bit more work to do. I think we're going to do a ribbon cutting probably in about three weeks. We've got a long punch lift, punch lift where we've got to complete some things and then do a final audit to make sure the playground is safe. One of the things we're going to do moving forward is we're going to have a mulch party, because I've got hundreds and hundreds of yards of mulch that we're going to put out on this playground. So we're going to invite the public to come out again, maybe one or two times to do that. But we're almost there. We did a lot of work on Saturday and Sunday, so it's really looking like a playground now. We've gotten a lot of things accomplished Monday and today as well. So, if you haven't ridden by there, ride by and check it out.
Yes.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I've got to give you a quote, all right? Oh, hold on, because I, you know, I do, and I do want to give, recommend, not recommendation, but commend my son. You guys know, if you don't know, he's autistic and ADHD, and he was out there with me, eleven years old, doing everything linked up with some of the single Marines. They took him under his wing and let him build. And it really made him proud that he had the ability to be out there and do that build. So, thank you for the opportunity, and it's amazing. I cannot wait to get on that plate.
Foster, I just want to commend you and your staff. I met, I worked with two of the young ladies, Ms. Veronica and Ms. Jennifer, and they were just awesome. That, I can imagine what the, the playground looks like, so I'm going to have to get out there. But you know what? You need to give those employees of yours a day off, a free day off. A swimming party, maybe a pool party. For all of their, I mean, it was hot out there. It was hot, and they stayed out there from seven to nine. I commend them.
Do you have anything else? Alderman Bass?
Just, just a couple of things. And Foster, I'm sorry I wasn't there during the week. I had a great week up at PepsiCo. They invited me, and I was, it was great to be up there and see how a big corporate, you know, entity works. But I was able to get out there a little bit Saturday, and I don't know how y'all do it, because that heat about killed me. So I don't know how the rest of the team did it, but thank you for letting me participate in other ways, such as feeding them and bringing drinks and things like that. So, it was great. A couple of things, and Mr. Regeri, this probably goes to your department, but I've been notified, thank you, Alderman Best, who has, has helped me, that we've had some complaints about Trent Court not cutting the grass where the buildings that are going to be demolished, they're not taking care of that area. I know they're going to demolish the building, but can we pass along maybe to nuisance and abatement about that? And then, I just, I don't know what we need to do, and I've had some requests to look at this, but our days in property, you know, I, I know a lot of that is unkept looking. Is there something that we can do maybe to clean it up a little bit, or how we need to handle that? Because I've gotten some comments about that. That needs to be added to my list. And I do want to invite all the aldermen. If you're here at City Hall at any time, if you will go to Chrissy Color's old office, that's located across from Mark's office, in the whiteboard there, everything that I'm working on in my ward is listed there. I'm meeting weekly with Mark, and currently, there's fourteen, fifteen items on there. You know, and I'm working on them with remarks of what we're working on, what we're doing. Please feel free to go in there at any time, view that, see with it. If you have a question about anything that you see up there, call me. But, you know, that's how I'm communicating with the city manager on what's going on in my ward and what I need help with. I do, Alderman Best, several times you've come to my rescue, and I do appreciate that in talking to citizens. Because again, what we do is about relationships. And Alderman Best, or Alderman, you know, Harris, or Alderman Kids, you may have a relationship with someone in my ward. I may have a relationship with someone in your ward. And people talk to people that they have relationships with. So if it's a matter of somebody knowing you and they call you and say, "I've got this problem," it's great, talk to them, assist them. And then, like we've done in the past, shoot an email that just said, "Hey, I've talked to so-and-so in your ward, they need this assistance." And, and we all work together, and that's how we make a much better board and a much better city. But that's all I have here. Thank you.
Alderman Bass?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, I'm here with the Public Works Director, but I'm going to let everyone else go through, and then I have him to come up and discuss what we talked about, stormwater issues today and the things that we need to do.
Okay. Alderman Bass?
Well, I have some stormwater issues as well, so I'll wait until Mr. Montane comes up. But I do have some other items here. Um, Matt, um, I want to take a proactive approach to Lake Tyler. I mean, not Lake Tyler, but, um, yeah, Lake Tyler. Um, that is a very busy intersection out there, forty-three, fifty-five, News Boulevard, seventy, and then pretty soon seventeen is going to be coming through there. And, um, I know that's a state maintained highway. So if you could, I don't know if anyone has mentioned this to you or any of the contractors out there, Lake Tyler or not, but coming out of Lake Tyler, there's going to need to be a traffic, um, light put there. Because that enters, coming up to that intersection, I mean, it, the, the traffic is, is really bad. So if you can look into that for me, get with, um, DOT, I would appreciate that.
I have another question. Are you saying like right over where the roller land is?
No, 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 this is on forty-three, down, um, across the street, I think it's Planters Ridge, the apartment, I mean, the housing complex. You got, you got Colonia Mobile Home Park, you got Beach Grove Mobile Home Park. And then you got Lake Tyler there. Uh, the new development that's still, they're still building there. And there's, they're not going to be able to get out onto the highway, especially, um, Monday through Friday, especially when school gets back in. So that's just something that if you could look into for me, please, I would appreciate that. And there was, um, there was a good thing. That, that's all I have right now, too. Um, I want to discuss some other things with you.
Okay. Alderman O.
Um, speaking of traffic, War One and Three did that, so I will. What's the, uh, plan for the results of the traffic study for the Second Street?
My hero.
Did we, did we get results back?
Yeah.
Well, we've got, no, we do not have the results back. We have preliminary results back, they are not final results. Um, they, uh, I've asked Matt Montane to purchase more traffic counters, which we will implement at multiple locations. So you can actually kind of see what the traffic's doing at those particular intersections. Because as of right now, it's just this many cars keep down the street at this particular location. They, it doesn't tell you whether they took a left, whether they took a right, whether they went straight, whether they turned around and you turn, whatever. So that's what's going on. We have got some preliminary data back, uh, based on the traffic counters that we have set up at that particular location that the police department put up underneath signage. And as of right now, um, the results show for the same exact week from two years ago, about a sixty-seven percent reduction in traffic volume at those particular streets.
Was this information, um, given out to the public?
Um, it was shared with me from Chief and Matt, um, and that's. To Mike Genesey.
Again, that's correct. So I'm just confused on why someone outside of the city received information before we did, even if it's not all of the data. Because we already have reports written about it, so.
He ordered or requested it, I guess, from the police department.
Well, we requested it too, so when it came in, why did we not receive it?
Those are traffic counts that I don't feel are complete analysis of the situation, which is the reason why I prefaced it. As I didn't want to go to say that this is a final report of what a traffic analysis is, because I've asked Matt to get the traffic count and show we can see what the full movements are. Chief, do you want to, you want to add to this?
The only thing that I'll say about it is that because it was handed out, there's been stuff on Facebook, and we've been tagged in it. So I'm not aware of it, and I'm not sure of anybody else. So it just kind of puts me off guard, and I don't know what's going on. Because I'm like, okay, well, I'm assuming I'm going to get this information to be able to look at it. That's my only thing.
The police department is getting freedom of information requests, which we have to respond to. But I did put that count in the weekly report. It was, it was in the weekly report.
Well, I didn't read it, I'm gonna be honest.
Alderman Harris, who, who outside of the city made a request? I'm not aware of that.
The person that, um, is the, uh, president of the Gant, uh, neighborhood.
He's also the one that requested the traffic count.
He's in, he's in the city, though.
No, I'm saying.
Outside of the border.
Outside of the border, I meant, yeah, I'm saying someone outside of the border.
I, I thought you meant somebody from another city. I was just curious who it was that was so interested in that.
No, because I got a call on it today, and I was tagging the post, and I was like, I'm not aware of anything. But again, I will admit, I did not look at the weekly summary, because I was outbuilding, so.
Wasn't he the, wasn't he the one that requested the traffic count?
No, we did.
No, I think, but I think. Mike had already requested it, and it was in place when we had requested. So it was already up and running. Um, I'll tell you, I sat there one afternoon for about fifteen, twenty minutes. There was cars coming through there, a lot of cars coming through there. But every one of the cars that came down Second Street made a left turn on to Trent. Every single one of them. If you would, and I'm not a traffic guy, but it just would make good sense to me that if you would eliminate the left turn and make it a right turn only, which would put them back on first, that, yeah.
And that's the reason why I want to do a full analysis of all the intersections. Because what's going to happen is, that person who would have turned at the Second and Trent will now turn at Rim and Second. They will turn on Rim, they'll go down to Third, they'll make a right, and then they'll make a left on to.
Try maybe we can make that left, no left turn too. I mean, you know, if we're going to look at it.
Alderman O, did you have anything outside of your business?
No, sir, I just want to make sure that we were all aware of where we are in that study and when the results will be to us, and when we'll have the actual data to make some decisions. That was all, thank you.
Um, yeah.
I have one more thing. Um, Jeff, um, could you please come up? I want to ask you some questions. Can you give me a little bit of information about the UNC C grant? Uh, it was in your, the weekly report, and it, um, mentioned about some future projects for the Duffy Field Grade to Five Points area. Now, was that in relations to the, um, commission group, or is?
No, we're really just exploring every option we can to fund a resiliency study or that drainage study that we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, looking for, um, all the pots of money to fund a more robust study.
Now, we have a gra- grant right on board now. So she's writing grants for the entire city?
It's mine all of yours, ma'am.
Okay. Is there, is, say for instance, she can write a grant for me that would help aid me in Ward Five with drainage? Is that something that she's automatically is doing? Or is this something that, as in all of mine, have to approach your, you and her and talk about it?
It's a great question. You can talk to, I mean, we are, um, looking, there's, we're looking for a basin-wide study, which would cover a portion of your ward. I mean, we can obviously look into anything you would like to.
I, I would say.
We can look for money for.
Yeah, I, I would say, Alderman Best, if you have specific locations you have concern with, first, I would make those aware, uh, or make those locations, um, um, be known by Matt Montane, the Director of Public Works. Because if we can handle them internally in staff, then obviously that's something we need to get on our list. Um, if they're major, significant, you know, projects that require improvements to infrastructure or, or whatever, then obviously he still probably should be made aware of, so that we can make them on the list, uh, and also provide them. Because essentially what, what Margaret is doing with the grant writing is taking identified large-scale projects and trying to match funding sources or grant resources with those particular projects based on meeting the criteria of all these different grants that may be out there. So if we don't know where these projects are that you've got, or we don't know where these improvement projects need to be, that, that, or problem areas that you're encountering, or your constituents may be encountering, then we need to know those, so that we can get them on our list, so that we can identify them as projects and then possibly seek grant sources for them.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure you're aware of all the drainage problems over in Ward Five. So, as, as you're saying, I need to get with Matt about a lot of that.
And those, a lot of those projects that I'm sure you're pointing out, some of them, I think we did try to address on Second. Second, yeah.
North First Avenue, thank you, Matt, I appreciate that.
First and Second Avenue, those were some issues. I think we had some significant issues over there. Keep in mind, you know, we're working through the FEMA process on about eighty miles worth of ditch mucking and cleaning out that we're trying to get through the FEMA process. That's a huge project, if we could get that funded. So, um, that would impact every single one of your wards, every single one of them. So it's very important that we continue to seek out that, which we are with our consultants, our FEMA consultants. And then, uh, if you've got specifically identified locations, we, we received a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant, uh, to, to do two major improvement projects that were not, uh, repair-funded projects from FEMA, but we were actually able to get some funding, uh, from Golden Leaf to go fix those two projects that we had already identified. So any of those locations you know, please let us know.
Well, while we're on this subject, I just wanted to say this much, because of the, um, I know we have done away with the stormwater fee as of June thirtieth, and that money, those monies was transferred to the general fund. So if I identify some of these areas within the Fifth Ward that has sustained, subdued, I mean flooding, some of the people are not back in their homes yet, and there are some things over there that needs to be done, then you're telling me that, talking with Mr. Montane, that I can, some of those funds will be allocated to get that work done? I'll go in more detail with Mr. Montane, but I just want to know.
Sure.
Some of that money is in the general fund, so it can be moved around so that we, I can get some of these projects done. Because I'm looking at hurricane season is upon us. And I have over my area, there is a lot of ditch line, that there's debris still in, drains are still, I mean, you look in the drain, me, me and my husband have gone around to these areas, and there's dirt in the drain. That when you look in the drain, you don't see a bottom to the drain, you see nothing but dirt, which is almost touching the metal, I guess, cover over it. So it's things like that that we, that the city can handle. I, I think employees should be able to handle that. Uh, if not, can we get somebody, a contractor or some help in here to get some of this cleaned out? Because hurricane season is right here.
Are, are we in a bit of a conundrum where we've got some funds that we could spend, but we're also awaiting potential revenue sources that we will be restricted to use on that purpose? And then if we spend our own money and then we get reimbursed and the work's already been done, now we spent money that we could have used somewhere else, is, is that potentially the issue?
So, but let's let Matt cover this. And, and once again, you know, there, there's significant ditch work that still continues, Matt will highlight that. But I mean, we had probably thirty-five listed items in your weekly report this past week that showed significant drainage issued projects that we have cleared, mucked, repaired, done, whatever it is. And keep in mind, that's eighty miles of ditch work. That's not, or major tributary ditches that we have here. That's not your right in front of a house driveway tile cleanup. I mean, there's more and more, more and more miles of those. Uh, so I'm going to let Matt discuss those, and, and we'll try to highlight as much as we can.
Uh, yeah, I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. But Alderman Best, to answer your question, um, or to, to comment on you, the stormwater staff, though it's in the general fund, still operates as a stormwater division. They still have the same employees they've always had, plus we've added employees to them. And their job is on a daily basis to maintain the storm drainage system, whether it be drainage ditch, drainage pipes, culverts, uh, collapsed pipe, minor repairs, it's all taken care of by a stormwater division. If you have a certain area that you or your husband have noticed that the, the basins are full of dirt and debris that need to be cleaned out, uh, just like you did on Washington, uh, Washington Street, if you'll bring those to our attention, we'll immediately get staff on those. Uh, I think staff does a very good job when stuff is brought to our attention by the board and the city manager to jump on those right away. So if, if you've got specific locations, please pass them along. Uh, if you would like to sit down with myself and Avery and our staff engineer to discuss some of those items or projects you feel need to be taken care of, we're more than happy to do that. Uh, we did that with Alderman Kinsey today. Uh, and I've exchanged emails with just about every alderman on this board in reference to different projects.
Again, because what, what I'm seeing here is, I mean, we still have debris and ditches from Hurricane Florence. So that is something I think that, you know, staff can go around and get, at least pull that stuff out of the ditches. And I know we're waiting on some, I know we're waiting on FEMA. I, I, I understand that we have miles and miles of ditches and canals that needs to be cleaned out, and we're waiting on FEMA before that.
I mean, we've still got places where you come across where it just hasn't been noticed or stepped in. Where it's got some downed leaves, or it may have some trash, or, you know, two weeks ago, we found a refrigerator over and off of, uh, Glimmerdy Drive in a ditch. I mean, it's just stuff we come across we'll clean. If you've got specific areas, certainly bring them to our attention, and we'll address them immediately.
Yeah, because my problem right now, what I, what I'm dealing with right now, is the fact that, okay, we have, I would like for you, Mark, Matt, and Avery, and whomever else wants to come along with me, I want to know, I want you to show me a map of how this drainage, this water is flowing. Because I got water coming from Jack Creek Smith Bridge to News River, and then you got water coming in from the Trent River. So I want to know, where's this water going? Where's this stonering at?
Uh, we've actually got, we've got a map, I'll be more than happy to walk you through it. Uh, if you'd like to view it on your own, it is on the city's website and our stormwater divisions.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's on there, the drainage map, but I will certainly more than happy to go through it with you. Um, the only, the only other thing I will point out is, you know, we've also got, you know, probably seventeen or eighteen different active stormwater projects, uh, within the stormwater division. It, it's everywhere from the project we've just been working on in North First Avenue, Goldsboro Street, uh, and several others. We've got five USDA grant projects we're getting ready to get started on. Uh, as Mark indicated, we have got two projects where we have seen, uh, received grants to Golden Leaf we're getting ready to start on. So we're, we're continuously working on projects that, the, the issue we're running with the projects is the limited number of contractors. Uh, we've got one contractor who's got three projects. So obviously, he's going to finish the first project before he starts the second project, before he gets to the project over in Ward Six, which is Alderman O's ward.
So what did the, uh, Goldsboro Street, um, project consist of? What, what was actually going on with that?
The low spot, there was a low spot in the, in the street where all the water drained, instead of draining to the Duffy Field Canal, it drained to a low spot on the street, which then was causing flooding on several different property owners. So what we did, we went to that low point, we put in a catch basin to receive the drainage, and then we piped that to the Duffy Field Canal.
Alderman Kinsey.
Today, Matt and I met and we discussed manpower, equipment, to be efficient, to be able to serve the, to serve the needs of the community, to upgrade, uh, a, a lot of equipment to be prepared for the hurricane. And, um, I was asking what was the need, what do we need? And he was able to, we was able to discuss that, and that's what he's going to bring before us now.
Um, and if I could just add to that, I think one of the major comments he, he brought up when we talked to Seth today was, was eighty miles of drainage ditches. Um, and the first question he asked was about the one million dollars that the city budgeted and put towards drainage ditches. Uh, and the question was, has any of that money been spent to this date yet? Uh, and the answer to that is no. And then he asked why. So to answer that question, dealing with our FEMA consultants and dealing with FEMA in general, we have been advised not to start spending that money, not to get a contractor in those drainage ditches yet. If we do that, we will jeopardize getting our reimbursement, getting that money reimbursed through FEMA. Uh, we are working with several different agencies to determine what we can and cannot do in a lot of these ditches. Uh, some of them are blue line streams where we can't do any mucking and digging. So we've got to make sure we are only working in the ditches that we're allowed to, uh, to work in. So talking with the FEMA representatives this afternoon, talking with our FEMA consultant, they're waiting on one response from one agency, and they hope to have that sometime next week. Uh, and once they get that response and they forward that on to FEMA, they're hoping within the next thirty days, we can start initializing some of these stormwater ditch work projects. Uh, we'd be utilizing the one million dollars that the board funded, and then if and when FEMA funds ditch work, we could then reimburse what we've already spent to the city.
One of the reasons why to, so about the Stanley White, the drainage, the reason why it's going to be funded.
I'm sorry.
The Stanley White drainage that we found out through the study, we should have done.
I know the board also allocated some funds for us to do some projects on, uh, stormwater-related, uh, projects in and around Stanley White Recreation Center, leading all the way up to the Frog Pond. Uh, in doing so, we did a study, if you want to detail that, that's why I was trying to get him to, to, uh, talk about. Um, the, the study indicated that it was not in our best interest to do that project, because the cost benefit was very minimal with an extremely high cost on it. So if you want to detail a little bit of that, that's one of the reasons why we chose not to do that project.
Yeah, and that was, that was the issue with the Frog Pond. We, we spent, uh, we budgeted somewhere around seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-thousand dollars for that project. Uh, we felt it was in the best interest of the city to get a consultant to do a complete drainage study of that area. Uh, prior to doing that project, we did that. Uh, that was a project that I brought before you at the work session. Uh, the consultant came back with a report and says, hey, look, you can spend a million dollars out here, and you're going to make very little difference. So it was at the work session that we actually decided, or you guys gave direction. to take that $750,000 and spend that on other projects that would make significant differences in the city. So that, that's the money we're using for these seventeen, eighteen, twenty different projects we're doing now on Goldsboro Street, North First Avenue, Harvard Way, some of those projects. So, we did do the big project at the Frog Pond, but we are using that fund throughout the city on different projects.
Matt, on the manpower, is it that we could use, could we use any of that money? That, out of the million dollars for manpower, is we can use any of that money for equipment to be able to work all of the ditches? Well, give me that number again, mileage?
The, the board of Alderman directed a million dollars to go toward drainage ditches. I've, it's more of a finance director question. If the board so, so choose to spend that money on personnel versus, versus cleaning ditches, we could, I would assume we could probably do that, but the only problem with that is, you know, personnel's a recurring cost. If we bring on additional personnel this year, then you've got to be able to cover that cost year after year after year. It's just not a one-time expense. But just to, just to elaborate a little bit more about our conversation today, when we talked, and you asked me about staff, you asked me, your concern, or the discussion was the eighty miles of ditches that we have in the city, and what it would take for the City of New Bern Public Works Department and Stormwater Division to be able to maintain all eighty miles each year. That's, that's kind of hard to put a number on, but I did my best. You know, I went back and I looked at the weekly reports that are being sent out to the board currently, and it looks like right now with the staff we have currently, we have six stormwater staff that are full-time permanent employees, and then we have an additional nine staff members that we are using for through the NC Works program. We've got a couple inmates. And then I've got three or four employees that we have allocated from other divisions to work with the stormwater crews. So with that, we've got fifteen employees working in the stormwater department. Currently, they are hand, doing everything by hand for the most part. Weeders, bush axes, pitchforks, and they're maintaining about a mile of ditch work per week. On top of that, there's, there's, you know, a certain amount of dishes that they're doing mucking out with backhoes or mini excavators. They've also got to do some minor repairs when they pop up, and then we've also got some project management. So, so looking at that number, you're looking at about a mile worth of ditches per week with about fifteen employees. So if you just take that and you put it into perspective, it would take you about eighty weeks to do the entire city if that's all they did. Vacations, holidays, what we've got, so you're looking at pretty much doubling the staff you have if you wanted all eighty miles of ditch work cleaned out every single year. And I can't say that that would do it, but that would be a good estimate. I put some round numbers together for you, as you asked. Fifteen employees that are average salary with benefits would run you about $675,000. And then by the time you take in uniforms, work trucks, mowers, and any other supplies and fuel that were needed, you end up, you get to a total number of about $1.2 million.
Matt, what, what, what sort of the equipment? Is there some newer equipment, some better equipment that would help improve the productivity?
Yeah, I was showing Alderman Kenzie a video today. DOT's got a, a piece of equipment, and we call it a ditch kicker. I think DOT calls it something else. You kind of hook it onto the side of your sideboard mower and you're able to drive down the street. And it does pretty good for your front yard drainage ditches, just kind of clearing those out. You know, some of your big ditches in the backyard, there's, there's not a good way to do it unless you spend millions of dollars on a piece of equipment. A lot of those, it's access to them. You've got to get access to them to even get a backhoe into there, so. There's certainly some equipment we can get, but a lot of it's going to be handwork as well.
What is the status update on funding that we were trying to receive? Is that the FEMA you're talking about in regards, okay?
Yeah, that, that's the $1 million for drainage cleaning that we talked about.
Well, to.
I'm talking about the thing that the mayor and you guys went to of what the USDA?
The tour, that's the five USDA projects. We did actually meet with them many, many months ago. We toured the city. They came back and reviewed ten different locations for projects. They have preliminary approved five of those locations. I actually had a conference call with them last week, and they've sent the initial agreements over for us to start doing the agreements, and as soon as that's taken care of, they'll start releasing the fund for us to do those five projects. I apologize, I don't have the list of those projects tonight, but I will tell you, they are in your weekly report. That went out this week.
How many trucks do we have now? How many trucks do we need?
I will tell you, currently, we have five work trucks and a total of nine pieces of equipment, counting work trucks. If you were to double staff, you'd probably need to add, you know, a couple pieces of equipment. You'd probably have to add four or five trucks, but every, all, all that's been accounted for in that number of $1.2 million that I came up with.
And how many backhoes we need?
I did not add a backhoe. We currently have two, so I think if we were to add something, we'd add some type of, some type of mowing device and some type of ditch cleaning device.
So, I remember a couple of meetings ago when we were talking about this, and I know I made a suggestion about temporary help. Are we not able to look at that, or we have to wait until we get the okay from the consultant to, to make decisions on at least the staffing, temporary help?
We, if, as we updated the board several meetings ago as well, we have been working through the NC Works program. We have, how many, four in your department? I think Foster, how many do you have? He's got two. So, I mean, we're, that's at no cost to us. All we've got to do is provide these guys supervision. So, we're working through every avenue that we can. If the board wishes to make a budget amendment and expend some money and allow us to have, have additional temporary staff, I'm sure Matt will take every one of them, he'll fund.
I mean, that was the suggestion I had made, is if we have the funds, at least I know with the stormwater it's been allocated, we have in the general fund, why couldn't we put some money aside to at least get some more temporary help to, you know, try and get more than a mile a week of ditching done for the simple fact that we are currently in hurricane season and there's, like she said, there's some ditches that have.
And keep in mind, previous, previously, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before that, there was some temporary assistance that was provided, Matt, to go clean sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, that's, those, those are in place?
They started on Monday.
They started on Monday. They're in place, and we've done the working on, on sidewalk cleaning.
Wouldn't it just be wise for us to wait and see what FEMA's gonna do? I mean, if FEMA's gonna fund this, I mean.
We have a $20 million project out there with FEMA right now that could potentially get funded. Whether it gets all funded or none funded, or whatever, we don't know. Even if it's a quarter funded, I mean, it sure would be nice to have $5 million to go do some ditch clearing with. So, that's where we are. It still doesn't change the fact that Matt and his staff are out there doing typical day-to-day maintenance activities and clearing as much as they can with the stuff that they have. But when you're talking about anywhere from, you know, zero to $20 million project that FEMA could potentially approve, that we've got sitting out there, that, that's in comment period. JR, you can probably update them a little bit, maybe as to where that's at, as far as the CRC review for the ditch work. But, I mean, we're, we're waiting to hear from FEMA about that project.
But we're sitting here waiting on FEMA. I understand, but we're sitting here waiting on FEMA. So, and we, what's the timeline? We don't know what timeline. We're gonna receive any funds from FEMA. We're just now, you, you told me that you're just now finishing up, well, reading a report, receiving funds from Irene and Matthew.
That's a great, great point.
I know. So, it's a time, you know, we're real.
It's not like we're standing around doing nothing. We're doing the best we can.
And I didn't say that you weren't, because I know y'all are working hard, but I just, I know.
I suggest, as I said earlier, if you've got hotspots or you've got specific locations, please pass them along. I am more than willing to meet with you at any time. If we need to have a weekly meeting and talk about stormwater with a couple different Aldermen, I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
So that we know where these, these problem spots are, because, like I said, I think Mark and several Aldermen can attest to it, if we get a phone call about an issue, we are pretty good at getting staff on it pretty quick.
Well, I'm specifically speaking of North Hills Drive, Washington Court, Hazel Avenue, Washington Street.
All of Hazel, Washington Court last week with the back truck, went and sucked out all the drains as requested, and also did North Hills as well.
Well, they didn't do Washington Court, because I was over there yesterday, and there's dirt in the drains. So I don't know what they, that's what I was gonna ask you. What does the back truck does? It sucks out all the dirt?
Yes, ma'am.
They didn't, they must have forgot Washington Court, because.
Okay.
And also, Williams Street, Jarvis Street, I mean, I've got pictures of when it just rains, it looks like a river over there. But, I, I, I do understand that, you know, it would be to our best interest to wait on FEMA. I do understand that, but then in the meantime, I think we need to take some action and try to do something to clean up these areas, because we may be possibly getting some more water in here that's gonna affect people that, right now, are still currently trying to get back into their homes, so.
Alderman Best, I would also add, if you're taking pictures of them, please forward them to me. I think the mayor can attest, he sends me pictures. He don't even, oftentimes, send me, like, any detail about it. He'll just say, Dial Street or Middle Street.
Okay.
And sends me the picture. I forward it to Matt, his guy will throw it in.
Well, that's who I usually forward them to, Matt, anyway.
If you've got those, we send them.
I will do some.
Matt, is there any equipment that you need right now that needs to come before?
You know, it's, it's kind of hard. You add staff, you got to add equipment to go along with it. You add equipment, you got to add staff to go along with it. So, you know, we're making do with what we got. We're, we're doing a lot of work with the staff we got now. And at some point, we either, we either wait for FEMA or we decide to put more money into it.
Well, it's nice meeting with you today, and I'm impressed with what y'all were doing. I know when the meeting started, it started raining, and the guys started leaving me. You know, we're in a meeting, but they said it was raining, so I understood that. So, they went over to, what was that place that was having problems with you? You was telling me that it had all these things in the water.
Monterey Circle area.
Thank you, thank you for taking care of that. Woo, thank you.
I mean, they just got, excuse me, it's raining, we got to go to work, and I was impressed.
It's flowing like a river.
Listen, we appreciate it, boy. Now, believe me, I appreciate all you do, and I know you and your staff work hard, believe me, I know that, don't worry. But also, I'd like to know, we had the five projects, you were saying the five projects. They were approved by USDA, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And you said you didn't have those five projects, locations with you right now? I would like to know those locations. If not, just shoot me an email, that'd be fine.
You've got debris removal off of Oaks Road in Rennys Creek, $132,000. You've got bank erosion stabilization at the intersection of Red Robin and Trent Road at $77,000. You've got the drainage ditch between Red Robin and Chelsea Road, the Ratchell County Gas Station, at $9,000. You've got debris removal in Wilson's Creek, which is off of, off of Yarmouth. That's a small, small amount of $4,500. And then the three large trees that were in the drainage ditch on North Hills Canal was funded at $72,000.
And Matt, can you give your phone number to the, to people that is listening? I don't know, your office number.
Office number is 252-639-750.
And that's for anyone that's having any type of drainage issue that they've been called in.
Drainage issues, concerns, anything public or work-related, that will put you into our office to talk to one of the administrative assistants, and they will definitely get it to staff to get it addressed.
Thank you.
One more thing, Matt. Don't shoot me. Am I correct to say, over in the Duffield area, by the railroad tracks, there is, I'm gonna call that a lagoon? Is that a lagoon, or that's just a pond that's sitting there? Stagnant, stagnant water, and I've had people contact me about that. But I didn't bother you, Alderman Bingo.
Yeah, that's okay. I let them know it was in your water. Call the authorities you will, but I will tell you, that stays with water in it and will always have water. It sits in the water table, so that you're not gonna get rid of the water. I mean, that's.
Oh, it is in the water table?
Yes, ma'am. So when, so when everything in Duffield drains, it drains down to that location, and either goes out through the river, and the river's up, it gets pumped over to the Jacksmith Creek wetlands.
Okay, so there is a system attached to that that's pumping that water someplace else? So, okay, all right.
Is there any way of cleaning that area out if you would have to?
We go in there probably once or twice a year, try to get all the debris out of there, try to get all the trash out of there. We've, we've installed a couple things upstream to try to catch the trash before it gets in there to make it easier to clean, but we can certainly get staff over there again.
Sounds like we need to have a ditch party.
Yeah, a ditch meeting.
We're having a mulch party, remember?
Well, the ditch sounds more important than the mulch, but, hold on.
I'm gonna answer, do you have something?
I've just got one more thing. I kind of forgot to mention this, but congratulations to the fire department for the Battle of the Badges. Their goal was 175 units, and the fire department collected 187 units, so congratulations to the fire department.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate you and your staff.
I'm not leaving.
Oh, you're not? Oh, you got more?
I thought you had more.
No, 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 no. Jeff, can you come back up, please? Thank you. If you could give an update, because I've had a lot of my constituents asking me about their applications that they submitted in for the, for the two FEMA.
Four oh four and the four oh seven, absolutely, yeah, thank you. That's a great, I wish I could provide you an update. I think the city manager touched, and Alderman Odom touched on exactly the amount of communication that we're getting from the state on FEMA, on those applications, which is essentially zero. I did actually get a very weird email last week that was asking from FEMA, from their new rep. Now, we've been through four representatives dealing with that program with us. We've been assigned four different people since, since we originally met the deadline of January and February of this year. So, I received an email asking me when we were gonna tear down the homes, which was disturbing, considering we submitted over a hundred applications to the state. We've received no communication, and they were asking me when the city's gonna tear down the homes. And my response was, well, I'm still waiting for you guys to approve which homes that we're moving forward with, and I've never received a response from that. But to answer your question, we have received no information. We ask at every opportunity where we are, when we're meeting, going to these resiliency conferences, meeting with the new office of resiliency and recovery, meeting with the directors and their deputy directors in those organizations, meeting with the state representatives. Nobody has any information on when that money, or when that program is gonna take the next step.
So it's sitting on the state's desk?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad they were fast-tracking it.
I, I wish, I, we have done everything we can to get it.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new business that's, that's time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other business to come for the new board of Alderman?
Second.
So motion, second is a discussion. Seeing that, all favor the motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay.